Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this public meeting to order if everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last commissioners' meeting.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the minutes have been approved. Now is the opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to talk about any of the agenda items?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Spano. I live in Stafford Avenue in Scranton, and I have a question on 24-0255, the approving of tax-free municipal bonds to purchase Commonwealth healthcare systems. It is my understanding that because these are tax-free, the recipient of these will have, I think the figure is close to $800,000 or a little over $800,000 in tax-free bonds to help finance this purchase. At some point, the taxpayers of Lackawanna County are going to have to back these bonds, whether it's directly or indirectly, immediately or later, it will happen. Secondly, in a number of these types of issues, especially for a nonprofit type of organization, it is common practice, and has been for, gosh, at least 10 years, to make an agreement with the entity to pilot, in other words, to pay in lieu of taxes to the entity that grants the bonds to help with the tax base. University of Scranton does it, Marywood University does it. Are these new potential owners of the healthcare system going to do that?
I think they're here to speak today when it comes up on the agenda, but I believe that they've stated publicly, at least down in Wilkes-Barre, that they would consider that at a later time, once this deal went through, when they got the hospital system up and running, but I'm sure they'll address that when they get up.
Is there a possibility that such an agreement can be either written into this particular legislation or as an amendment when it's finalized?
I don't believe so. Don?
How about a separate deal?
Commissioners, no. What we're doing today, we're not approving the bonds. What we're doing is we're approving the issuance of the bonds to the Wilkes-Barre Redevelopment Authority, and the county's not backing the bonds. If the bonds are not paid, we're not responsible in any way for the bonds. All we're doing is giving our consent as Lackawanna County, because two of the facilities that they're purchasing are in Lackawanna County, so they have to get the consent and the okay from one of the municipalities. It could either be the city or the county for the project.
Is that why the hearing on this or a meeting on this was held in Luzerne County?
Correct, yeah. The bonds are being issued through the Redevelopment Authority of the city of Wilkes-Barre.
Okay. In view of your statements yesterday on a potential tax increase and in view of the other costs associated with the election coming up, it would be, I think, smart to ask for a pilot consideration down the road. I strongly urge you to take that into consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay, thank you. All right, first up today, we have a proclamation declaring the month of October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. We have two speakers here today from the Women's Resource Center, Mackenzie Major and Judy Copeland, and before I call them up, I'd just like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas in Lackawanna County, in recognition of the critical work being done by domestic violence advocates and allies in service of the survivors and victims they serve, we encourage all citizens to actively engage in supporting the Women's Resource Center and other organizations working toward an eradication of domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence among teens and adults are not confined to any group of people, but cut across all economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. The impact of domestic violence directly affects individuals and communities when society ignores or tolerates violence in relationships. And whereas, women and men need to work together to bring safety and equality. More than 1,450 adults and children in Lackawanna County were provided crisis and advocacy services last year, with 6,500 calls to the crisis hotline, and 73 families provided emergency safe housing in Lackawanna County last year. And whereas, the impact of domestic violence is felt not only by individuals and families, but communities and a nation as a whole. Lackawanna County joins others across the state of Pennsylvania and nationwide in supporting domestic violence victims and survivors, the advocates and organizations who serve them, and holding offenders accountable throughout Lackawanna County. Now therefore, we, Bill Gohin, Matt McGloin, and Chris Chirmack, Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim and recognize October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. And we'd ask if Mackenzie Major and Judy Copeland would like to come up and say a few words.
Good morning. I'm in place of Judy Copeland. My name is Mary Claire Mecca, and Mackenzie and I are both here on behalf of WRC. Oh, yes. We recently just changed our name from Women's Resource Center to WRC, which means we respect and care to make it comfortable for all populations to call our hotline and feel comfortable coming to the center. We want to thank you for this proclamation.
Thank you very much for all the work you do, and we'd ask you to come up and we'll present you with the proclamation. Okay. The first up is ordinance 24-0256.
Commissioners, this is authorizing the lease of certain real property to the Redevelopment Authority of the county of Lackawanna. An ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, authorizing the lease of certain real property to the Redevelopment Authority of the county of Lackawanna pursuant to a lease agreement, declaring that the guarantee of said authority's guaranteed lease revenue note for the benefit of the county of Lackawanna to be a project of the county for which lease rental debt is to be incurred. Determining to incur lease rental debt in a principal amount not to exceed $12 million respective of said project, such debt to be evidenced by the county's sublease and guarantee agreement and with respect to said note. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, the authority authorizes and requests, or the county authorizes and requests the authority to undertake and to proceed with the project. The county hereby declares the guarantee of the authority's note, the proceeds of which will be used for the project, to be a project of the county for which lease rental debt is to be incurred in a principal amount not to exceed $12 million. The county hereby authorizes the incurring of lease rental debt in the form of a sublease and a guarantee agreement to secure the payment of principal or redemption price of and interest on the note. The chairman, our vice chairman of the board, or the chief of staff, or deputy chief of staff of the county, are each hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver and to affix and attest the corporate seal of the county to the sublease and guarantee agreement. The chairman or vice chairman of the board, or the chief of staff, or deputy chief of staff of the county, are each hereby authorized and directed to execute, attest, seal, and deliver the lease agreement. The proper officers of the county are hereby authorized jointly and separately to any and all other such necessary to effectuate the issuance, execution, delivery, and sale of the note and to the financing of the project.
Thank you. And here to speak today is our CFO, Dablezoni, and attorney, Brian Kozlansky.
Good morning, Commissioners. We had discussed this transaction at some length during the last meeting, so my comments will be relatively brief. This borrowing for all intents and purposes is for unfunded debt. It is a borrowing for operations. The borrowing you may consider a bridge into the next budget year. The maximum on the borrowing is 12 million. We're still modeling the dollar amount. It likely will not be 12 million. We focused more on, for cash flow purposes, $11 million. The lease rentals, which would really be debt service, has been incorporated into the budget for next year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Belzoni or attorney Kozlansky? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, the ayes have it and the ordinance has been approved. And just before you leave, if we didn't do this, like if we all voted no, we would run out of money before the end of the year, correct?
That's correct. So just as of yesterday's cash flow statement, we had approximately $8 million in the general fund. There are some funds that we're looking to transfer into the general fund, but we also have a repayment of $15.5 million tax and revenue anticipation note by year-end. So all I would say is really just do the math.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next up is Resolution 24-0258.
This is approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 376722 to numbers 376791, and also 377076 to 377654 inclusive, totaling $2,934,669.21.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0249.
Approving an Agreement for Drug and Alcohol. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the agreement for drug and alcohol with the Resurrection House, LLC, for fiscal year 2425.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to request your support of the drug and alcohol program's contract with Resurrection House, a male halfway house drug and alcohol program located in Great Bend, Susquehanna County. The approved daily rate for this level of care is $202. This contract will not cost the county any money, as all services are covered by funding from the State Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. The program is needed for the residents of Susquehanna County. Thank you for your attention to this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Hilcoski? Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0250.
Approving an Adult Probation Grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the adult probation grant and aid in the amount of $218,712.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to present this grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime Delinquency for the county adult probation department. This is a grant in the amount of $218,712. The grant is retroactive to July 1st, 2024, and goes to June 30th, 2025. This grant will be used to pay the salaries of three probation parole officers in the department.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for our treatment court director, Mr. Betts?
Greg, just this for existing probation officers, correct? And you expect that grant, historically, as you know, will continue to grow every year as well, right?
Yes, this is for three current probation parole officers, and this grant is expected to grow over at least the next three grant cycles.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0253.
This is a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for the local share account grant program. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the submission of grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program. And whereas, Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County. And whereas, Lackawanna County is submitting grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the Monroe County Local Share Grant Program on behalf of various agencies. Number one, Carbondale Little League, $78,000. Number two, Scranton Prep High School, $472,000. Number three, American Legion, 328 and Archibald, $47,000. Number four, Archibald Vets Memorial Park, $302,000. Number five, LaFesta Italiana, $104,000. Number six, Manuka Athletic Association, $22,000. Number seven, Music Little League, $121,000. Number eight, St. Mary's Villa, $103,000. Number nine, the Lackawanna County Arts and Culture, $99,000. Ten, Lackawanna County Coal Mine Tour, $125,000. Number eleven, the Lackawanna County Covington Park area, $117,000. Number twelve, Lackawanna County Trail Maintenance, $105,000. And number thirteen, Lackawanna County Merly Sernoski Park, at $105,000. Oh, number fourteen, Lackawanna County Trolley Museum, $68,000. And number fifteen, North Scranton Little League, for $182,000.
Thank you. And here to speak on this today is our Economic Development Director, Krista Magnata.
Hi, good morning. Thanks, Commissioners. We have 15 LSA grants from the Monroe batch that we're asking for this resolution for. Again, these are all applicants. These are folks applying. They have not been awarded as of yet. And the benefit of allowing small groups and agencies, including nonprofits, to be able to receive grant funds through this sponsorship and assistance is that Lackawanna County helps them, and sometimes it's just that little bit of money that gets projects that otherwise couldn't be funded over the finish line. We do receive 15, or I'm sorry, excuse me, 5% administrative costs for each award, and this is no cost to the county at all, this program. We've done 31 applications, or I should say, our grants manager, Sandy Ofshinsky, has done 31 LSA Monroe grants applications up to this point, and the grant closed as of September 30th. So we're hoping all 31, if possible, could get funded, but we will certainly let you know which ones do and which ones do not.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnata? Just one comment. I want to thank you and Sandy and the entire team down there. Obviously, this, it takes a lot of work to help these people put the applications together and get all of this stuff submitted, and you've done a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0252.
Approving a local economic revitalization tax assistance property in the city of Scranton. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County regarding eligibility under LERTA for property tax exemption for a certain property located in the city of Scranton. Whereas, Slocum Hollow Properties, LLC, by and through Frank Dubas, President, has requested the county of Lackawanna to grant a tax exemption for certain improvements to be constructed on the properties located at 514, 516, and 518 Lackawanna Avenue in the city of Scranton. Whereas, pursuant to LERTA, the city of Scranton adopted file of the council number 50 on December 3rd, 2018, and held meetings to define the boundary of the area within the city of Scranton in accordance with a procedure set forth under the act. And whereas, the Scranton School District adopted a resolution on December 19th, 2018, granting a tax exemption to the defined area identified by the city of Scranton as well as in Exhibit A. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, acting pursuant to LERTA and the act, likewise desired to provide the properties described herein as in Exhibit C with a tax exemption as set forth pursuant to LERTA. The following PIN numbers: 15643-010002, 15643-010003, and 15643-010004. Approximately 7,500 square feet in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, is hereby specifically designated as being a deteriorated area and is eligible to participate in this tax exemption program so long as it meets the prerequisites for the program as hereinafter described. The county of Lackawanna, as a result of an increase in the tax assessment for the property attributed to the cost of future improvements constructed thereon, exempts as follows: For 10 years, for which the newly constructed improvement would otherwise be taxable, 100% of the eligible assessment shall be exempted. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon approval, and unless otherwise repealed by subsequent legislation, this resolution shall remain in full force for a period of 10 years from the date of completion of the newly constructed improvements. This resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption.
Thank you. And here to speak on this this morning is Valerie Kalpin from our Office of Assessment.
Yes, this project is a continuation of the revitalization of the 500 block of Lackawanna Avenue. The project has been paying taxes on this at $96,000 since 2017. Mr. Dubas will continue to pay those taxes through the 10 years of the revitalization of those buildings at no extra cost to the county for adopting his tax abatement.
Can you just explain for the public the way the LERTA program worked in the past? It was the city of Scranton, the school district, and the county, but then the counties expired? Can you just explain how that works?
Correct. So the city of Scranton, the Scranton School District, and Lackawanna County all entered into an agreement in 2018 and 2019 agreeing to the LERTA, which would abate taxes on improvements on deteriorated properties, properties that would otherwise not be developed, blighted industry, coal mine areas, things that people would not have the money to do the reclamation as well as the improvements at the same time. Scranton's LERTA runs through 2028. The county, when we adopted our resolution to go along with the city of Scranton, ran our resolution through March 1st of this year. We will continue to work with the city of Scranton on LERTA resolutions, but instead of a blanket approval, we will work going forward on a case-by-case basis. So we will take projects that fit with the county's ability to move forward with revitalizing the area one by one, as opposed to just approving every single project. It has to be economic development.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Kalpin? Okay, thank you very much for the explanation. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Next up is Resolution 24-0254.
Accepting a lease proposal from Pitney Bowes. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a five-year lease agreement with Pitney Bowes Incorporated for the district courts and coroner's office postage meter to cost $53.26 per month per office.
Thank you. And here to speak on that is Mark Cordelli, who is our Director of Community Relations.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, Tracy. Yes, we're looking for your approval for a new five-year lease agreement with Pitney Bowes. The 10 postage meter machines are, the lease is ending January 2025. We have two vendors who have submitted bids, Pitney Bowes being the most responsible. We have over the five years, a $3,240.60 difference between the two lease agreements, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Cordelli on this? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Next up is Resolution 24-0255.
This is approving the tax-free municipal bonds to finance the purchase of the Commonwealth healthcare system by Woodbridge Healthcare Incorporated. Whereas, the city of Wilkes-Barre Finance Authority proposes to act as a conduit issuer and to issue tax-exempt bonds in the maximum principal amount of $180 million. Whereas, Section 147F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 provides that tax-exempt obligations may not be issued for the benefit of persons other than state and local governments unless the issue is approved by the applicable elected representative of a governmental unit having jurisdiction over the issuer and the geographic location of the site of the facility to be financed, following a public hearing of which reasonable public notice is given. And whereas, a portion of the facilities to be financed as part of the project are located within the jurisdiction of Lackawanna County. And whereas, upon review of the summary of said public hearing, the Board of Commissioners of the county of Lackawanna desire to approve the use of tax-exempt financing for the project. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board and Commissioners of Lackawanna County as follows: The Board of Commissioners of this county hereby authorize and directs its chairman, our vice chairman, to execute and deliver on behalf of the Board of Commissioners of this county a certificate of approval with respect to the bonds as attached here too. The approval granted hereby shall not in any way pledge or obligate the credit of the taxing power of Lackawanna County, nor shall this county be liable for the payment of the principal of or interest on the bonds. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption.
Thank you very much. And here to speak on this piece of legislation is attorney Laura Kurtz from Woodbridge, representing Woodbridge Healthcare.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for having us this morning and considering the resolution. As it was already mentioned before, I just wanted to point out that approving this resolution does not authorize the project in any way or pass judgment on the wisdom of the project by the county commissioners. It's simply an approval for the use of tax-exempt financing by Woodbridge to acquire the facilities and also use a substantial portion of the bond proceeds to make capital improvements to those facilities. It's not pledging the taxing power of any city, county, or other local government. The bonds are being secured by a revenue pledge from the borrower as well as a security interest in the property. With me today to answer any questions that you might have on the project side is Mr. Don Steigman, who is the president of Woodbridge Healthcare. With that, I'll take any questions that the Commissioners may have. Thank you.
Do any of the Commissioners have questions?
Just a comment, you know, most importantly, I think what's happening here is we're going to have, our hospitals are not going to just close and be vacant. So number one, that's going to be the most important thing that's happening here. So, you know, it's, I'm thrilled that you're investing in our area here, and, you know, we'll have state-of-the-art hospitals. You're going to invest millions and millions of dollars into these facilities, so it's only going to benefit us tremendously over time. And then as for Mr. Spano's question, that was a question that I had about, you know, payment in lieu of taxes. Maybe that's something we can consider down the road, because it's, gives us, takes a pretty good chunk out of our tax money every year. So either payment in lieu of taxes is something we can look at, or services in lieu of taxes. So things we can talk about moving forward.
Thank you for having us today. As you know, these hospitals are very crucial to the delivery of healthcare to the community. As far as the issues relating to payment in lieu of taxes, we're really not in a position to commit to doing that. And the reason for it, as many of you know, since you live in the community and have seen over the years the services at both Moses Taylor as well as Regional Hospital, we're really in a position of really reinvesting any of the dollars that come in into services and into the facility. So unfortunately, we're really not in a position to do that at this point in time. And we understand what burden it does put on the county. We believe if we continue to rebuild the hospitals, that there will be other We believe if we continue to rebuild the hospitals, that there will be other sources of revenue coming back to the city and the county. For instance, you know, we have dollars that we are going to invest through the bonds in some capital projects. Obviously, there's permitting fees, et cetera. We're hopeful over time as we build back the hospital, there'll be additional employment and income tax that gets filtered through the formula. So, there will be some other forms of payments coming back. And that's where we're really at at this point because, again, I think everyone knows the condition and what needs to happen in those hospitals.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, but without this, the closest prenatal care would be roughly 70 miles away? Does that sound right?
I'm not sure of the exact miles, but I do know we met at one point with the representative of the governor's office and some other folks in the outlying communities. We do receive at Moses Taylor a lot of transfers from the outlying areas, including places like Honesdale, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I just would like to point out, I mean, when it pertains to something like this, it's not about a source of revenue. It's about quality healthcare and access to quality healthcare for not just the people of Lackawanna County, but really all of the northeastern portion of the state of Pennsylvania. Thank you.
I have a question. What is the current status of Regional Hospital and Moses Taylor as it stands today?
So, both of those facilities, right now, are in the process of really, we're taking a look at everything that's going on in those facilities, from services offered through what needs to be rebuilt. So, they're in a position right now that they're going to need additional capital infused. There's some old equipment there, and they're going to need to have some services brought back. And the only way we need to do that is going to be not only through floating of the bond, which is some capital improvements there, but also, we're going to need to rebuild services back into the community, get the community to continue to support those hospitals.
And what has your experience been in doing this type of thing, coming in and kind of resuscitating a hospital system in other parts of Pennsylvania or other parts of the country?
Sure. So, my background, I was president of Jackson Health System in Miami, Florida, a big university teaching hospital. Excuse me, also had several community hospitals similar to Wilkes-Barre and Scranton. And I went in there 14 years ago. I finished my tenure about a year ago. And what I did was do a turnaround with them, similar situations. I've also had experience with other hospitals from a turnaround perspective. So, in taking a look at what was going on here in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre, it's doable. It's doable because what we need to do is get the community back behind us, and I know there's a very, very strong commitment from this community to go ahead and make sure these hospitals survive. What we need to do, and that was one of the purposes of bringing these hospitals back to a not-for-profit status. There, as you know, there's several advantages, not only that the property tax, there's sales tax, which we won't need to pay. Investor-owned hospitals need to pay sales tax. There's also access to funds, foundations, other mechanisms for us to access dollars that, right now, these hospitals don't have that access to. So, my background has been pretty much in turnarounds.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Attorney Kurtz, could you just reaffirm for the Commissioners and the folks here that by granting approval to the issuance of these bonds, Lackawanna County is not accepting any financial responsibility for their repayment or, you know, in the future?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. And it states directly in the resolution that the approval does not in any way pledge or obligate any funds, credit, or taxing power of the county, nor shall the county be liable for any payment. As I previously mentioned, the authority is issuing the bonds. They have a limited obligation to pay proceeds over for debt service to the extent that they receive them under the indenture and the various financing documents, but the borrower through their gross revenue pledge and pledging a security interest in the properties through mortgages is on the hook for paying debt service on the bonds.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, on the question, I agree with some of what has been said up here this morning in terms of the loss of tax revenue, which obviously, in the financial situation that we're in as a county, hurts. But what would be even more painful is if Moses Taylor and Regional completely closed. I think we all look at this maybe a little bit differently when you have children, but as Commissioner McGoyne pointed out, if Moses Taylor were to close, it's the only NICU in an 70 to 80-mile radius. So, a sick mother or a sick child would need to travel far away if this hospital closes. So, to me, yes, it's painful that we lose the tax revenue, but it would be far more, far more painful if we were to lose access to healthcare. Anyone who has been up to Guy Singer CMC knows that the emergency room is packed all the time. They cannot handle any more patients. We literally have a healthcare crisis in Lackawanna County now, and them taking over this hospital and hopefully reviving it is the answer to the issues that we're having. And I see the, our state representative, Bridget Kozarowski, who's sitting in the back, who I want to give credit to because she's kind of been leading this effort as a former nurse and now as a state representative. The other thing I think that's important to point out is that if Regional Hospital closed, we would lose our first-class cardiac care program. That would be debilitating. Then people would have to travel to Philadelphia and to New York. So, we really do need this, and again, if anyone has had to use the emergency room up at Guy Singer CMC, you have seen the problem firsthand. It is a crisis. So, we are praying that this turns out well. All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 24-0261.
This is a resolution entering into an agreement with RBA Professional Data Systems. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement with RBA Professional Data Systems for the RBA Delinquent System, for the Treasurer's Office, and the Tax Claim Bureau conversion.
Thank you, and here to speak on this is our Chief Financial Officer, Dave Bolzoni.
Thank you again, Commissioners. This represents a software conversion in both the tax claim and Treasurer's Office. The existing system, as it stands right now, is well over 20 years old. It's antiquated, and it's really in dire need of replacement. Both offices require an upgrade. The Single Tax Office is also converting to an RBA system. That legislation was approved last year. The conversion is ongoing and will be in effect for the 2026 tax year. Would be both the same with the Treasurer's Office and Tax Claim. So, the effort is to try and have the conversions in sync so that they're all in place for the 2026 tax year. Now, and I can't understate the fact that what they're using is antiquated. And there's a longer story to this that I'm not going to get into about prospective conversion that should have occurred a number of years ago that didn't. But in effect, with technology, you've got to continue to try and upgrade those systems over a requisite period of time, just in order to stay relatively current and to be able to conduct an efficient operation. Those departments do an excellent job, but they need the support of having equipment and software that's current and can create efficiencies within those departments. Relative to cost, the existing maintenance contract right now totals $25,176 a year. The new maintenance fee, once it's in place, is $28,750. So, the costs are relatively constant, even though you're getting a system that is going to be current versus one that's being used, which is over 20 years old. There are implementation fees, but they are one-time fees. The annual maintenance fees are just what I had quoted.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Bolzoni? Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Okay. Next up is a motion to accept the quote from Tyler Technologies for an accounts payable management training at a cost of $3,510. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question, here to speak on this again is our CFO, Dave Bolzoni.
Thank you again. As you're well aware, Commissioners, there's been a significant amount of turnover in the Revenue and Finance Department, and we've had departures over the last few years, and departures of some significance. There was a lot of experience that had either retired or moved to other positions. The accounts payable function is critical. So, just out of the operating budget, we're running $170 million in expenses. The person who had assumed that responsibility was never really trained to do so, and that person is doing an adequate job, but given the critical nature of that position, I thought it was very important to try and get as much training as possible. This is a 10-step program that will provide a lot of expertise on all things accounts payable. So, I think it's very important, the cost is really relatively nominal for the value that the county would derive from the program.
Thank you. Any questions on this for Mr. Bolzoni? Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Thank you. Next up is a motion to approve the quote from Valley Forge Power Systems Incorporated for the UPS battery replacement at a cost of $29,340. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
On the question, here to speak on this is our Maintenance Director, Mark Dewar.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is critical care for our UPS system, which is our battery backup system for the IT department, and that covers all our buildings in Lackawanna County that use our computer system. So, this is a replacement of 72 batteries, which is located on the sixth floor. So, and it's just to protect our system. Every five years, this comes up. We knew about it, that it was coming for this for 2024, so now we're in the process of replacing the batteries with Valley Forge protection.
Thank you. And this was in our budget?
Yes, this was in our budget this year. I allocated the money because I knew it was coming.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Dewar? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Next up is a motion to accept the quote from Scranton Rentall, 505 Center Street in Troop for tents, heaters, and lights for the winter market at a cost of $12,817. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
There's been a motion in a second. On the question, here to speak on this is our Arts Director, Maureen McGuigan.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. So, just a little background, the winter market's been going on since 2013. It's become a pretty beloved community event, an economic driver. Our vendors, our small businesses that sell, do very well. It found its permanent home a few years ago because we just love having it on the courthouse. But of course, you know, with outdoor tents and things, that was a little more costly. But the good news is, we are still able to remain a high quality at a lower cost. So, we've saved over $29,000 in tents because we've built our own sustainable, we call them vendor huts, from a state grant. However, we do still need some tenting. We like to provide a lot of free activities for families and the public, so we still need to have an entertainment tent, warming station, where people can come in and sit down and get warmed up. And also, we needed a couple of other smaller tents for some other activities and to showcase some of our nonprofits. So, that's what this cost is. But I did want to highlight that we've been working hard to keep the quality high and the cost low, so.
And this cost has been built into this, our budget already this year?
Absolutely. We include that every year under our Community Events line item.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. McGuigan?
Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or aye opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion has been approved. Okay, next up is the opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board?
First off, Gahan, I'd like you to explain and give me the breakdown of $900,000 you said I owe in property taxes that you got information from the Tax Claim Bureau. That's number one. Second, the county owes me over $18 million in damages right now for violating a Superior Court order for their failure to remove a tax lien off me for real estate taxes. So, I just thought I'd give you that, but I want the information that you sent out here the other day. In addition, the action that you did to have me removed from here under free speech, you had the sheriff remove me when a woman started questioning me about the taxes you raised, and I basically told her it wasn't her concern or her business, and then she said, "About my shirt?" And I said, "It'd be the next person." I was sitting down. You ordered the sheriff to grab me by the shoulder that created injuries to my shoulder. I've had five shoulder surgeries, and I'm under medical care right now, and I want you to understand, you and I will be going around again. I want you to tell me what authorization you have to order the Sheriff's Department to remove someone from here.
Mr. Bolis, this is your time to speak, so.
I'm just giving you the answers. I'm giving you the question. I don't want to debate it. We'll debate it later.
Right, I don't want to debate you either, so continue on.
So, you know that, okay? Now, I was accused by the Times reporter that was here, Chris Kelly, of a Trump trailer. Had nothing to do with Trump that was parked off on. It was your own personal skunk trailer that I had for you when you were in the county, in the city, and that's what was out there. Now, Gary and Brian made questions about me blocking the CYS. You got pictures in front of you, right there, that I supplied you. The photographs clearly show a county truck blocking the CYS. People double parked, couldn't get in. They're right there, Gary. You can get them from the Commissioners, okay? I took these pictures. You can see the CYS sign there. The county truck is blocking it. You made statements like handicap people couldn't get in. You have an eight-inch curb out there, seven, eight-inch-high curb. That's not handicap accessible. So, if you want to argue about accessibility to the handicap, I had three. I had a handicap sticker on the truck, the veteran thing, and I'm a veteran, so I had three places I could park out there. Okay, so what you're doing, and then the last picture I'm showing you is the sheriff grabbing me by the shoulder forcibly, and there's the photograph right there, taken, that was taken in here, so I could show the people just what went on here and how my rights were violated by you. Furthermore, you went ahead and they made statements about me that the trailer had something to do with Trump. Last of all, Commissioner Chermack, I appreciate the fact that you showed up when President Trump, or showed here. I want to know why you two guys didn't show up. You're here to represent all the people in the community, no matter what our political preferences, or race, color, or anything else. You represent all the citizens. You should have showed up and welcomed President Trump to Scranton, Pennsylvania. This is our town, and it's our county. It's not yours. We're all part of it. You should have showed up, you and the mayor of the city of Scranton, okay? It was an embarrassment. But when President Trump gets in, you'll want to see something change here, and you wish to God he did. I hope he doesn't even come near here again. Okay? As far as whatever made the comments on me, the reporters did, they didn't get it right, and I don't like people talking about me and not saying it factually. And that goes for Craig Kelly, or- And that goes for Craig Kelly, or Kelly from the Times. And last of all, I'm adamantly opposed to a tax increase in this community. If you run a business, you learn to cut expenses and you're not doing any of that. You're just spending money. Another park. And this hospital should be paying to be here, whether they want to be here or not. They're not here for nothing. They're here to make a lot of money. They don't get medical care free and they don't give us anything free in the city of Scranton. None of us residents get a discount. We pay. And that's the difference. So you're approving this, learn to cut the expenses. And you talked about my contributions, five tractor trailer loads.
Thank you very much.
Five tractor loaders.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Please sit down.
To the people in the flood zone area.
Your time is up. Please sit down. Thank you.
Go ahead. Tell me what you've done.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. A lot more than you.
You haven't done anything. I know you like to shut people up with a free speech.
Please sit down, Mr. Bowles. I'm going to ask you one more time. There you go. Thanks for complying. Thanks for your insights. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, I just have a statement. My name is Lynda Bonikovich. I am a judge of elections up in Benton Township. I would like us to treat each other, all of us, with respect and kindness to act like Jesus Christ is standing right in front of us. Please let the Holy Spirit open our hearts and surround us with love and peace. And let's start being biblical and not political. God bless us all.
Thank you, Lynda.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
I'm here for actually two reasons.
Could you please state your name and where you live for the record?
Kristen Zanthus, Scranton.
Thank you.
The one reason, I have for many years now worked the election polls along with many other people. You know, I know many elections are very important and every election, you know, is very high-strung. I do think though that a lot of the polls, where they are, schools, other buildings, they should have some sort of police protection once in a while, come by and check on things, especially this election. Secondly, I normally wouldn't say this, but I, along with many other people in this county in Scranton, use the public transportation. Now, I know at one time, Mr. Chermack, I spoke to you about something. The only reason that I'm speaking about it now is the one day I was coming downtown to go somewhere, bus couldn't pull over because I won't, I'll speak politely, but there was a truck in the way. I'm not going to give a name because I wouldn't do that. But I don't think that those type of trucks should be, you know, in that spot. I mean, there are, you know, vehicles that have to be there. I understand that, but a big truck like that is blocking the way. But thank you and you guys are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Rob Biese, Old Forge, Pennsylvania. Commissioners, I'd like to know, is there any way that the taxpayers can get what you took in as a profit and what you paid out?
Yeah, the budget, the preliminary budget is posted online and the audits are also posted online.
Okay. Another thing I'd like to know is why you allowed $300,000 in overtime for county jail workers?
$300,000?
No.
It was much more than that.
Well, I figured that I got was $300,000.
Oh, it was...
But my question is, if you're the county commissioner and you're supposed to watch out for the taxpayers, why are you allowing this? Why not just hire more guards and cut the overtime?
Well, we did just hire more guards.
I know. I've seen that in the paper also.
Okay.
How did you do that with no money?
Well, the money is already budgeted for the guards. So we didn't go over budget. We're actually, we're under budget and we attempted to hire 19, but I think it only ended up being about eight.
Okay.
Some people fell off or decided not to do it.
And then the news we had that you were going to cut 190 to 190 county workers. Has Sheriff DePisa been involved in that?
That, your figure is incorrect. So it was actually 90 positions and most of them were vacant positions. So we really did it by attrition. Either those positions had not been filled for a long time or were not filled within the last few months. So we decided not to include them in next year's budget. But the, the correct figure is 90 as it stands today.
And just going back to your overtime question there, sir, and not just from the prison, but the Sheriff's Department as well, we've cut 1.25 million dollars in overtime as well, sir, just to answer that question.
Because the sheriff is doing a very good job.
Absolutely.
And I hate this, we're into already October and two more months, we're going to be into December. And I hate to see anybody get laid out before Christmas because that wouldn't be good. I mean, they put their time in here. So you should at least give them that knowledge and wait till after the new year if you're going to cut any county jobs. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Maureen Schumachers, City of Scranton. It's just a small thing, but when I saw what, how much you're going to increase the taxes, I thought it was sort of greedy. As a matter of fact, when I was at the, the city meeting, I asked that they be careful when they make the budget because, you know, you guys have grabbed all the money and as I see it, and I, I think as a taxpayer, yours and, and the school and the municipality are going to be very high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Joe Titino. I'm from Old Forge, Pennsylvania. I'm here to discuss the pandemic relief fund, $40 million that the county received from the federal government. You guys are aware of that. And Matt, Bill, and Chris, I requested you guys get a copy of this. Matt, did you get it from Josh Costellani? He was supposed to hand you a copy.
I have a copy right here.
Chris, you were, did you get a copy from Tracy Hart?
I don't mean...
Okay, well Tracy. Well, I, to Josh Costellani and Tracy Hart, I was able to get a copy of the $40 million that was allotted to Lackawanna County. $67 million was for the city of Scranton. They got more than we did, which I don't think is right. We're bigger than them. I don't know why anybody didn't contest it to get more money. But anyway, my questions are, I request each one of you to look at this sheet, all the expenditures on the sheet, and justify the money that was spent and the money that's allotted. Because $40 million is a lot of money. And according to this, we're going to have about $7 million left after everything is spent. The one question I have, I'm concerned about is $2.5 million for a boomerang park. A lot of $2.5 million. Do we need a boomerang park? What is it and why do we need it? Answer that question. Anybody could answer that question.
Yeah, Joe, a lot of what you're looking at too is from 2022. And if you have any questions immediately after this, our, our Economic Development Director, Kristen Magnata, is right there and, and Sandy Obshinsky is right there as well. They'd be more than happy to take you through the history of our funds and where we currently stand today.
Well, that's, that's just one of the items that are on the sheet that I have a question on. And some of the other questions I have here, it's Lackawanna County Administration, $4 million. Was that money taken up for salaries or whatever, out of COVID money?
No.
What was that administration money?
Kristen Magnata and Sandy Obshinsky are sitting in the audience today. So after this meeting, Joe, sit down with them. They'll explain the whole thing to you.
So you're telling me is they put this list together? This list came from them?
Well, Kristen Magnata just started a couple of months ago. This, that list was put together prior to us taking office, but they...
Now, did you guys approve this when they looked at it and know what this is about? Because I asked each one of you if you saw this.
Well, I, I know how they spent the money, but we've only been here 10 and a half months. So we didn't, the money that's already been allocated, we didn't approve anything. We've just, we just are only here 10 and a half months.
Yeah, but a lot of it's not spent yet. You can stop this money if you wanted to, can't you?
So there's, I, I think I know where you're going with this. There's about $7 million left. The, one of the reasons why the county is in the position it's in today is because they used one-time revenue sources that then weren't there next year. So if you said to me, use the $7 million to plug part of the $28 million deficit, that's great, but then where do you get that money next year? That, that has been cited in every, every financial report that we've seen, from Standard and Poor's, which is one of the reasons they downgraded our credit rating, to PFM, the financial experts that we brought in. So you're essentially robbing Peter to pay Paul. The bill comes due next year and you don't have the revenue. So we have, we have to stop that practice. You have to take the structural deficit head-on instead of using these one-time gimmicks.
Right. But what I'm saying, the savings on the sheet, so let's say the boomerang park, you have authority to say the $2.5 million, we don't have the money, let's scrap the project. Who has the authority to stop that?
The Commissioners have the authority, but again, I'll go back to, okay, you stopped the boomerang project. They've cleared the brush. They've already started that project. I happen to believe it's a wonderful thing for Lackawanna County. It's, it's going to be a brand-new, beautiful park. In fact, we had the plans that were presented up here a few months ago. But if you're saying, take that $2.5 million and use it towards the budget, every financial expert has told us, don't do that. That's the reason why we're in the position we're in today as a county.
Yeah, but you're taking that $11 million need this year, you're taking $2.5 million off it. You have to borrow less money. I understand it's a one-time deal, but you're helping the taxpayers. Do we need the park more or do we need the...
Joe, not really. That's, that is the reason we're in this position is because it looks good and it sounds good, but it doesn't make any financial sense. I'm just being honest with you. You could ask PFM, you could ask anybody with a financial background, including our CFO, who's sitting in the back there, who in many memos that he's issued to previous Commissioners has said, "Don't use the one-time revenue sources." Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Commissioners, other business, Commissioner Chermack?
Just, just a quick comment on yesterday's startling news on the budget for the county. Probably about a month ago, you know, my team and I, which are all volunteers, by the way, started on this project. So we've been waiting for the preliminary budget to come out. Now we're going to start to look at what we can do to make any suggestions, find any savings. You know, our, our main goal is not to affect any of the services throughout the county. You know, but we have to look at what, you know, some of the most important things are health and human services, emergency services, roads and bridges. Those are some of the departments that we need to, you know, make sure that they have what they need to operate. So, you know, in the next few days, hopefully, maybe in the next week, we'll have some input on where we can find, hopefully find some savings and what we can do to help the taxpayer here in Lackawanna County. So stay tuned. We are working on it as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Commissioner McGowan?
Thanks, everybody, for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to take a couple of minutes just to address the budget as Commissioner Chermack brought it up. Yesterday, Commissioner McGowan and I introduced a preliminary 2025 county budget after months and months of working on it. And I just want to make sure that we checked through some facts today. Yes, this is the first major tax increase since 2012, when the real estate taxes rose by 37.5%. From 2013 through 2024, taxes increased by 23%. The millage increased by 23%. Increases occurred in 2013, 2020, 2020 was mainly for the pension, and 2024, which wasn't nearly enough to make a dent in our structural deficit. Now, here's the key part that I want to make sure everybody pays attention to. Since 2013, or 2012, the county's operating expenses have soared 79%. Commissioner McGowan and I were not here for that period of time. We just got elected and took office in January of this year. So the expenses soared from $91,542,597 to $164,499,454. Therein lies the problem. If you could sum it up in a few sentences, ladies and gentlemen, that's it. The expenses went like this and the revenue went like this, while previous administrations and Commissioners sat here like this and didn't do anything about it. Now, let me check through what we have done since January. Number one, first thing we did was to identify the problem and to be honest with the public. If anybody has been paying attention, Commissioner McGowan and I have been sounding the alarm literally within the first two weeks since we took office. What did we do about it? We entered the Strategic Management Planning Program with the State Department of Community and Economic Development. We hired financial experts to take a close look and to provide a thorough analysis at every single department and every single role office in Lackawanna County. That has not been done, to my knowledge, in decades. The second thing we did was we eliminated the County Department of Health. The County Department of Health that Commissioner Chermack was for. So Commissioner Chermack and some of the speakers that got up and talk about cutting expenses, I'd like to know how he was going to pay for this Department of Health. We're going to save roughly $3.5 million. So the previous administration signed on to a Department of Health without knowing the true cost of it. And it took us, instead of simply signing on to the application to the state, to actually do an analysis and look into how much it caught, it costs. So if we want to talk about cost savings, we literally cut the budget as soon as we get, almost as soon as we got into office. We instituted a hiring freeze. We instituted a spending freeze. Now, that was only just so we could get through the end of the year. Because the other thing we uncovered when we got into office was that the county was going to run out of money. Commissioner Chermack, with all due respect, voted no today to borrow $11 million when the CFO stated very clearly that we were going to run out of money before the end of the year. So if you're not going to vote to borrow the money, where's the plan to fund the government through the end of the year? Again, this is an issue that Commissioner McGowan and I inherited. We are finally, finally paying our bills on time. We're not holding them like previous administrations have done. When we got into office, we were getting calls from vendors, where's our money? What are you talking about? I don't know. The county stopped paying the bills. That's a huge problem. Everyone in the audience today, think about it. What would happen to you if you just stopped paying your bills? Creditors would be coming after you. That's what happened in Lackawanna County. When we talk about cost savings, we eliminated 90 positions across 19 departments. That's nearly 10% of the workforce and over $2 million in savings. No raises for non-union employees. In the past, they were given a 2.5% raise automatically every year. That's a savings of over $400,000. Reigning in healthcare spending for the first time in a long time. You heard when PFM, the financial experts got up here, they talked about the fact that Lackawanna County has the richest healthcare plan, one of the richest healthcare plans in the state. Simple question, how do you pay for it? No Commissioners, as far as I know, before us, including Commissioner Chermack, ever asked a question. I went back and looked, all the union contracts that Commissioner Chermack signed, did he ever ask, how much do they cost? Can we afford it? I don't think so. So reining in healthcare spending for the first time in a long time, increasing deductibles and co-pays for non-union employees to rein in the richest healthcare plan in the state. We're doing that. We've proposed that. And I want the taxpayers to make sure that they understand that. Cutting overtime costs by 1.25 million. Priority-based budgeting. A further effort to examine every aspect of county business and budgeting according to priorities rather than past practice. So again, when we took office in January, what we found as we started to ask questions was everyone, not everyone, but most people were on autopilot. Let's continue to do the things the way they've always been done because that's the way they've been done. And that needs to stop. Now, this is going to take time, but we've started the ball rolling in the right direction. Finally, working towards funding the pension plan. Failing to fund the pension was a major factor in the county's credit rating downgrade. So essentially, what past administrations were doing, they just didn't put any money into the pension, and then they started to put a little bit in. But what did that do? That's as if you had a huge credit card bill and you only paid the minimum amount. Well, your, your balance keeps on going up. That happened in the county to the tune of millions and millions of dollars. So we are finally addressing that huge problem. And I also want to respectfully correct the record. Commissioner Chermak issued an absolutely asinine statement yesterday on social media and to the press where he stated the following, "The Democratic majority commissioners had the nerve to exclude me from the preliminary county budget presentation, silencing any Republican's voice in our county while stating, 'This is our budget.'" Let me be clear. Commissioner Chermak is a liar. Commissioner Chermak has been a county commissioner for nearly five years now. He should have been well-aware that per the county home rule charter, a preliminary budget must be released publicly on October 15th. He was invited yesterday, but shockingly failed to provide his own budget, which quite honestly, Commissioner McGoyne and I assumed, based on past comments, that he would. He's been here for five years. Why wait until October 15th for him and his team to produce their own budget? It should already be produced. We were waiting yesterday for him to come forward and say, "Okay, guys, we understand you have to raise taxes. Here's our ideas." Here's how, he has said he won't raise taxes and he's going to produce a spending plan that will, that there'll be no tax increase. Simple question, where is it? Commissioner Chermak has had five years. We've only been here 10 and a half months, five years. I've never seen one idea or one plan, one spending plan where you can get through all of next year without raising taxes. So he was invited yesterday. He's been invited to all of the budget hearings, and he just doesn't have a plan. We have stated publicly, as I mentioned earlier, that a tax increase was looming. We've been saying this since at least the middle of this year. We've been warning people every time anybody asked us and anytime we had a chance to publicly talk about it that the county was in absolute dire financial condition. At one point, as I mentioned earlier, the county was on its way to running out of money before the end of the year. So again, Commissioner Chermak has access to all the same information that we do. He was invited to all of the budget hearings with department heads, and coincidentally, and ironically, him and his team sat down for hours, hours, with our county CFO, who's in the back, Dave Bolzoni, to go through all the numbers. And the ironic part is that Commissioner Chermak has stated publicly that he has full faith in Mr. Bolzoni. He doesn't trust the budget that we put together. Come up with your own budget. So where is the plan from Commissioner Chermak? Is there, maybe there's concepts of a plan. We're still waiting. You have to understand how county government works, a majority-minority commissioner form of government works. If you're saying on one hand, as Commissioner Chermak does, that you refuse to raise taxes, and he's criticized us for the way that we've run county government for the last 10 months, he has said that we have spent excessively, which has been debunked by PFM, the financial experts that we hired and our own CFO, I ask again, where's the plan? Where's the ideas? Why were you and your team not prepared to release your own budget yesterday? We have been working on this for months. There's no secrets here. October 15th was a drop-dead date. They weren't prepared, and they didn't release the budget. Finally, does anybody really believe that's here today or out in the public that Commissioner McGoyne and I wanted to begin our four-year term as county commissioners and our first budget by raising taxes 32%? I can tell you, and I'm sure Commissioner McGoyne can tell you, because we talk about it all the time, we did not. We are both raising our families with small children. Our parents are senior citizens, and we completely understand the frustration of having to pay more in taxes, and we did not want to have to do this. But we promised you, we promised you back in January when we took over that we were going to be honest with you. And quite frankly, if you wanted commissioners that were going to sit up here like the last ones did and just blatantly lie to you and pretend that everything was okay, you got the wrong guys here. We're going to be brutally honest with you about every single thing that we do. So we've given it to you straight. These are difficult decisions that we have to make, and we take no joy in having to make them. But there is light at the end of the tunnel, and this is the first step in getting the county's financial house in order. And we are the administration that's going to do it. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.